Okay, six o'clock, we're gonna get started. Can we have a flag salute led by Commissioner Ruestaller?
Commissioner Grinsky?
Present.
Commissioner Midgley?
Here.
Commissioner Ruestaller?
Here.
Commissioner Milas?
Here.
Commissioner Sengha?
Here.
Okay, everyone's accounted for. Actions on requests for continuances or withdrawals. Asking if any item wants to be continued or withdrawals.
Thank you Chair, not that I'm aware.
Okay. Okay, at this time the public is welcome to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak to anything that is not listed on the agenda? Okay, seen none? Anyone online? Okay. Moving on then, action items. Consent agenda, item number one. Items calendared for consent will be approved in one motion without a public hearing. Consent number one, variance number PA 2300203. Do we have a motion?
Salute.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Majorly with the second, Commissioner Midgley? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Midgley?
Yes.
Commissioner Milas?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruestaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Sengha?
Yes.
And Commissioner Grinsky?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item two, administrative use permit, number PA 2300165. And I believe we have a presentation from staff?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm going to just go ahead and remove myself from this hearing item to, which is standard protocol. My, one of the members of the opposition is represented by a family member, so to avoid any appearance of impropriety, I'm going to remove myself and I will be back for the next item.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have Associate Planner Nancy Arroyo will present the project.
Okay, very good.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. The proposed project is an administrative use permit to permit an owner-operator truck parking facility for two trucks and four trailers as an accessory use in the AG 40, general agriculture 40 acre minimum zone. The project site has a general plan and zoning designation of general agriculture and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of South Austin Road and East French Camp Road, east of the community of French Camp. The property is primarily surrounded by agriculture uses and scattered residences. This is the site plan depicting the proposed facility located, which is here. Access to the parking areas proposed from a new driveway onto South Austin Road, the existing single-family residence is accessed from East French Camp Road. In July of 2022, code enforcement staff performed a site visit and observed four trucks and seven trailers. As a result, code enforcement staff opened a code enforcement case. One year later, the property owner applied for the subject land use permit for truck parking for two trucks and four trailers, which is the maximum number permitted for owner-operator truck parking. Since the case was opened, both code enforcement and planning staff have performed field visits and observed that the site remains out of compliance. Owner-operator truck parking may be conditionally permitted as an accessory use in the agriculture zone pursuant to several special use regulations, including a maximum limitation of two trucks and four trailers on five acres located on a county-maintained 20-foot wide minimum paved roadway. The owner-operator must live on-site, provisions of a 10-foot setback from adjacent parcels, and a maximum limit of one structure for a repair shop. Although the applicant states that the proposed project is for two trucks and four trailers, this is not supported by what has been observed on-site during field visits. Furthermore, neighboring property owners have also submitted photos depicting in excesses trucks and trailers on-site in excesses of these limitations. The Community Development Department has received six letters in opposition stating concerns regarding the project's scope, accessory use requirements, noise, and the environmental review. Neighbors cited an inconsistency between the existing operations on-site and the proposed application. The project site has been under code enforcement case since July of 2022 and has continuously been out of compliance despite Community Development Department staff informing the property owner that approval of an administrative use permit is required prior to permit any operation involving trucks and trailers on-site. The accessory use requirement specify that five acres is required for two trucks, four trailers. The subject parcel is 4.98 net acres in size, but the gross measurement exceeds five acres, meeting the minimum requirement. Noise from the existing unpermitted operation has created a constant impact on neighboring properties. The unpermitted trucks, trailers, and parking approximately 360 feet from the nearest residence. Since refrigerating trailers are included with this application, if the project is not denied, a noise study would be required to determine impacts on neighboring parcels. The Community Development Department initially determined that proposed project was exempt from CEQA. If the project is not denied, staff is requesting the project be referred back to staff to reevaluate the proposed project and any environmental concerns. In order to approve an administrative use permit, seven findings must be made in the affirmative. Community Development Department staff was unable to make five of the seven findings in the affirmative, as listed in this slide. Findings number one, three, four, five, and seven cannot be made in the affirmative because the current use of the site is unpermitted truck parking operation, which is exceeding the two trucks and four trailers requested in this application. The project is inconsistent with the general plan, the site is unsuitable for the size of operation, the project would create land use capa- I'm sorry, compatibility and nuisance issues, and the project is not in conformance with the development title. This photo is taken from South Austin Road looking northwest towards the subject parcel and the proposed project site. This photo is taken from East French Camp Road looking northeast towards the subject property and unpermitted truck and trailer parking. It is recommended that Planning Commission deny administrative use permit number PA 2300165 based on the inability to make findings number one, three, four, five, and seven contained in the staff report. Thank you, this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, so just to be clear, so the, what we're seeing on the code enforcement or the pictures there, that's more than what they're applying for, is that correct?
Correct.
So they're applying for owner-operator, and what was it, truck numbers and the trailer numbers on that permit?
Oh, let me go.
Four trailers, two trucks? Okay.
Yeah, it's been like, sometimes it's like four trucks, seven trailers, it's, just depends. I think even yesterday, there was like, three trucks, four trailers.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. At this time, if we could hear from the applicant? The applicant, the person that would like this to be rezoned? Mr. Singh, Jiskaran Singh, the applicant? Okay. Never had that happen before. Um, do we move on to, yeah, County Council?
You certainly can move forward, it was noticed and called, you know, consistent with the properly noticed agenda. Or alternatively, if you do want to give the applicant more time tonight and potentially see if staff can contact that person, you can table the item and then bring it back later in the meeting. So it's really up to your discretion.
We can move forward as well, or no?
You can move forward with the item right now, having given the applicant a chance to appear again, properly noticed, or alternatively, you could table that in.
Okay, I, we have a pretty busy agenda, so I would like to go forward, if that's okay? And so, seen, would anyone like to speak in favor of this project? Here or online? Okay, seen none, we will move on to the opposition. We might have, one second. Are you here for the use permit of Jiskaran Singh? That's what I'm asking.
Would you like for you to just speak right here?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Hey, Honorable Members, thank you for having us. Jiskaran Singh had a family emergency and he had to fly out to Indiana. His uncle got sick, so unfortunately, he was, he's not able to be here. But I'm just here in support of him because he's a good friend of mine and helped him initially put in the application. You know, he has a family-run trucking business and he, you know, does everything he can to support his family and that's done through this, you know, trucking business. He, his trucks were being vandalized, broken into in, whenever he parked it in Stockton, and so he ended up putting a couple trucks, you know, on his property. But all he's requesting that he gets, you know, the permission to park two trucks and four trailers on his property. We understand that there have been complaints, but he is willing to work with those and resolve these matters. And again, his family business relies on this and he understands that this is an issue that's come up, you know, in front of us here, and he's working and wanting to do anything to get it resolved. So that's all I want to say for today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will hear from opposition? Opposed to the project?
Good evening Chair Grinsky and Members of the Commission. Brett Jolly, on behalf of the applicant, the Brokini family, BS Land Company and Brokini Farms. The Brokini family and their operations own several hundred acres around the project site, including the property immediately north and west of the project site. If you think about the project site being approximately a five-acre cutout from the rest that is surrounded by Brokini in that area. Brokini's got several hundred acres of agricultural crops in the area. And so, the Brokini family has noticed the ongoing issues with this project since it was first established in an unpermitted manner. And I should say, we fully agree with and support the staff recommendation. We believe that this project application should be denied. It was established without permits, and even though it came under enforcement and that's the reason that this application has come to you, the maximum that can be permitted at that site and what is being requested are two trucks and four trailers. We've submitted photographic evidence, including a letter that was presented today, showing that there are regularly up to 10 trucks and 10 trailers on that project site, even as recently as this week. So the applicant has zero right, or has a right to park zero trucks and trailers legally on the site right now and is parking 10 of each. So there is no reason to believe that if this commission grants two trucks and four trailers, that somehow the applicant will suddenly decide it's going to comply and move those off-site. There has been a habitual and systemic abuse of the use of that site by having substantially more trucks and trailers than could ever be permitted by this commission at that location under the zoning. So we would urge you to deny on that basis. If you approve this, there's no reason to believe that the applicant will suddenly decide to comply and it will end up being even more of an enforcement nightmare for the county to try to cause that applicant to comply with the maximum number in the permit. The second point in opposition here is, there is a requirement in the ordinance that the applicant for this particular type of permit must be the owner-operator of the trucks and must live on the site. The fact is, these trucks are owned and operated by a variety of third-party trucking companies that are parked on the site. While Mr. Singh, Jaskaran Singh, is listed as the property owner in the applicant, the trucks on-site all bear the names of several different trucking companies: Malhe Trucking and Transit, Malhe Truck Line, Korea Logistics, SBT Carriers, PNT Carriers, and SM Brothers. And there's evidence, photographic evidence of all of those in the record presented to you. So the point being, this is not an owner-operator situation. There are multiple third-party trucks being parked on the site in violation of the exception for truck parking that's allowed by the code. And finally, it's not just about complying with the rules. If the commission does give a green light to this approval, it's going to have substantial impacts on the neighboring property owners and residents. My client, Steve Brokini, has submitted evidence into the record of having trucks parked on his neighboring property and having dust and light issues from this operation. And even more compelling perhaps is a letter that came from a neighbor of the property site who lives across the street, Loretta Smith, that she submitted today. And she explains that there are constantly noise and operations and work on the trucks going on 24 hours a day, and it is a major nuisance to her and others that reside very near the project site. So I think you've got substantial evidence to deny this application and we would urge you to adopt staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition that would like to speak here? Okay, seen none, anyone online? Okay, seen then, now back to the applicant or their representative or friend if you'd like to speak again. Come on up, please.
Just a couple of things I would like to request and, you know, like if we could delay, like talking of this, just because Jiskaran had to fly out with his uncle who was sick. But, you know, addressing their concerns, we do respect the rules and regulations that the county has, just speaking on behalf of them. And if there is a rule, regulation to trucks, four trailers, we will comply to that. I understand that there have been issues in the past, but it's only because of the fact that the trucks have been broken, been broken into and have been vandalized. As far as the concern of the other trucks in the trucking business, those trucks are leased to him. They may have the name of a different company, like PNT Brothers or whatever it may be, but those are leased to him and he's the one operating them, so it's solely owner operations. And if they're talking about the concern of light or noise or whatever they may be, this property is located right next to a railroad that goes on probably three or four times a day. And so, I mean, it, to me, it doesn't really make sense that there's noise complaint when they're literally 500 feet from a railroad. So just three or four points, but again, I want, you know, Jiskaran to be here and for him to speak for himself. So I would just request that inside of the unforeseen emergency that we can just delay a little bit more and then that way he could be able to express some concern to you guys.
If I'm not mistaken, there was plenty of time to, I mean, he could have called, even called today, I imagine. Is that correct?
Yes, when we noticed this, there's plenty of time and we didn't receive any notification from anyone.
Again, it was a unplanned family emergency, so it was, you know.
Understood.
Just what I'm hearing from him, that's.
Just to make sure that you're making an informed decision, the Planning Commission rule regarding requests for continuance just says if a request is made for continuance, a motion may be made and voted upon to continue the public hearing to a definite time and date. So to the extent that the Speaker is requesting a continuance, a Planning Commissioner may bring a motion for continuance based on that request. So there's nothing in the rule regarding when that would need to happen, but those facts may inform whether you choose to bring that motion or how you ultimately decide that motion. So hope that that was helpful.
So someone could make a motion to continue at any time, essentially?
Based on the Speaker's request.
Okay. When we bring back to the Commission, I'll open that up for them.
Okay, and that would be.
And just to let you know, if it, if the application comes to a decision and gets denied, the, he is, does have the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors. So there is, it doesn't just die here, just so you know. He will have his, his time regardless of what's decided tonight.
Okay, I'll definitely.
Yeah, and there's a small, there's a process to it, but with your help, I'm sure you'll be able to figure that out. Again, depending on how that goes.
There is a little bit of a language barrier, that's why I'm here. And so, there are, you know, some things that he's learning as he's, you know, still new to the country. And so, I, you know, I'm just trying to help him out as much.
A good friend for showing up for him, appreciated, and you represent him very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna bring this back to the Commission at this time. Anyone?
I make a motion that we continue to a different date?
Okay, we have a motion to continue to a different date? Do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Do we need to add a specific date?
You can either, you know, continue it for, until we can confirm the applicant is available, at which point we'll re-notice and re-agenda it, or alternatively, the motion can be amended to include a date certain. It would help staff if you would clarify which of those you want to do in the motion. That would just help staff to be able to move forward with the applicant.
When we hear he's available or he can come back.
Okay.
Okay, we have, go ahead, Council?
I would just note that when you have a continuance, that is something that parties in, can weigh in on, and so you do want to open that up since it's pending motion.
Can you explain that last part again? I think Jolly's already ready, so he already knows what's going on, so.
As he was walking, I was sort of, wanted to make sure you did know that you do open up that motion for discussion so people can be heard for or against the motion to continue.
She would like us to open that since the motion has happened and there is a second.
And since he's standing there.
He's right there and staring at me and, alright.
Thank you. You're enough of a nuisance up here, you get recognized. Thank you again, Chair Grinsky and Commissioners for the record, Brett Jolly. This is a situation where oftentimes you will have an application come to you asking permission to do something in the future. So an applicant continuing that, that application really harms the applicant because it prevents the applicant from being able to start his or her project. The problem we have here is we have an unpermitted project that was started unlawfully two years ago. It's a nuisance to the community, it's a nuisance to, well, I don't want to speak for staff, but code enforcement has been dealing with this for two years. And the delay in granting this requested continuance just allows the applicant to continue the unpermitted operations and it prevents the county staff from moving forward to attempt to bring this project or this property into compliance with the zone. So it does harm to the neighbors and it benefits the applicant unlike most applications that we have. So for that reason and the fact that this was noticed, I don't want to sound completely unsympathetic to the applicant, obviously he had an emergency, but we've all had emergencies and you deal with those by taking care of what's immediately important as well, such as making sure. as making sure that you timely request a continuance if that's the case. We've come out and made our case, and this was the noticed hearing, and I would urge you to move forward with your decision. And if he wants, if this commission does in fact deny the application, he has the right to appeal that. But I don't think the applicant is in a position where he should be asking for a continuance, and especially an indefinite continuance until he finds it convenient or he is able to come to this commission. This has been far too long in the works of unpermitted operations. So, I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anyone else standing in the corner looking ominous. It was just Jolly, so, Mr. Jolly. So, okay, so, anyone else I would like to speak to this motion, here or online? Go ahead.
Just really quickly, I understand this gentleman's concern about, you know, extending indefinitely. We can, if you guys would like, do a motion to a date in the near future. Again, you know, family means a lot to him, and if something unexpected comes up to family, this is a priority, this means a lot to him. But if something happens at, you know, you know, 10 o'clock at night, and you gotta fly out, you just, that's something that's really hard to time. But as far as Jasperan, I just got off the phone with him before I came in here, he said he's, you know, he's willing to come back at the next meeting, and is just requesting an extension for this, and I will let him know, you know, all the things that have been going on during this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have, we have the motion and the second in place. Can we get a roll, and this is to continue this item? Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Milas?
No.
Commissioner Ruestaller?
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Mizley?
No.
Commissioner Grendsky?
No. Okay, motion does not pass. We will now open it for discussion at the staff, and I have, excuse me, at the commission. Question for staff, this is not in the agriculture-industrial zone, correct? Okay. Good, thank you, that's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
I make motion that we accept the recommendation of staff and deny this application.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have a vote?
Commissioner Sangha?
No.
Commissioner Milas?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruestaller?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizley?
No.
Commissioner Grendsky?
Yes. Okay, application is denied, he have a right to appeal? And then it'll go up to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time. Okay, moving on to the next item, general plan amendment number PA 2000217, zone reclassification. We have a report from staff.
Yes, give us one second to change out people.
Five-minute recess, please.
What?
And we'd like to hear from the applicant at this time. Or, excuse me, staff, apologies. The delay, yeah.
I have Alisa Gulart here, and she'll present the project.
Good evening, Chair Grendsky and Commissioners. This project, this project is comprised of four applications for a 78.78 acre parcel, which include a general plan amendment and a zone reclassification to change 14 and a half acres from agriculture urban reserve to very low-density residential, a Williamson Act contract cancellation for 1.57 acres that are proposed for a roadway, and a major subdivision to subdivide the entire parcel into two large agricultural lots and 26 residential lots. The project site is located on the north side of Woodbridge Road and contains general plan land use designations of open space resource conservation, agriculture urban reserve, and general agriculture. The zoning is agriculture 40 acre minimum and agriculture urban reserve. The portion of the parcel being subdivided into residential lots, which, yeah, there we go, is actually the section in the middle shaped like an ice cream cone. This is located within the urban community of Woodbridge, adjacent to the Wynwood Estate This is the site plan submitted by the applicant. The entire 78.78 acre lot is comprised of this area here. The subdivision proposes creating two agricultural lots. This would be the 20 acre lot here, and the 44 acre lot up here. Here in the middle, as I said, the ice cream-shaped one, is the 14 and a half acres that will be subdivided into 26 residential lots, and that's also the focus of the general plan amendment and the zone reclassification. I'm sorry, and down here... And down in the 20 acre parcel down here, you'll see the roadway that's proposed outlined, and that is the focus of the 1.57 acres that the Williamson Act contract cancellation has been submitted for. In order for a general plan map amendment and zone reclassification to be approved, the proposals must be found to be consistent with the general plan and other documents. For the urban community of Woodbridge, the general plan envisions the continued expansion of residential development north of Woodbridge Road. The proposal is also consistent with the general plan requirement for services, public service systems, as indicated by the conditional will-serv letters from the Woodbridge Sanitary District for wastewater service and from the McCollum Acres Maintenance District for water and stormwater. If the project is approved, there are additional steps required to gain annexation into the districts. Per development title requirements, the major subdivision proposes two access roads for the residential lots. There is an existing access point from River Miss Drive in the neighboring Wynwood Estate subdivision that was planned as an extension for future development when the Wynwood Estate subdivision was approved in 2006. There's also the proposed secondary access from the north side of Woodbridge Road that crosses the proposed 20 acre parcel that's under Williamson Act contract. The Williamson Act contract restricts that land to agricultural open space uses, so the cancellation for the 1.57 acres is required. And without that, the subdivision couldn't move forward unless the proposed cancellation is approved. It couldn't move forward as has been proposed. In order for a Williamson Act contract cancellation to be approved, the Board of Supervisors must be able to make the finding that the cancellation is either consistent with the purposes of the Williamson Act, or that the cancellation is in the public interest. The applicant has provided an analysis of the findings, which have been reviewed by the Community Development Department, and included in the staff report with a recommendation to approve. If the planning commission forwards this project to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation to approve, and the Board of Supervisors approves the project, the cancellation fee calculated by the county assessor must be paid prior to issuance of a final certificate of cancellation. The department has received 14 letters in opposition to the project with concerns about the project's consistency with the general plan, the conversion of farmland, disruption of existing agricultural operations, and building in an area potentially subject to flooding and earthquakes. Also, the capacity of existing public services and traffic issues. The project limits the conversion of farmland to the area planned for future development in the general plan. As the recommended condition of approval, the applicant will be required to provide agricultural mitigation for the loss of agricultural land. Other than the proposed residential lots, only 1.57 acres will be removed from agricultural production and from the Williamson Act, which is not anticipated to affect surrounding agricultural operations. Prior to issuance of any building permits, the Department of Public Works will review flood hazard reduction requirements, and the Building Division will review earthquake requirements. The applicant has also provided will-serv letters stating that there's adequate capacity for the project to be served for water, wastewater, and stormwater drainage. Included as a recommended condition of approval, the Department of Public Works requires the project to provide terminal storm drainage, meeting specific requirements. Roads in Wynwood Estates were constructed with width sufficient to accommodate additional traffic, including River Miss Drive, which was intended to provide an extension to future subdivisions. Additionally, as a recommended condition of approval, the Department of Public Works is requiring construction of an acceleration and deceleration turning lane along Woodbridge Road to accommodate traffic from the proposed subdivision. This photo is taken from Woodbridge Road, looking north towards the proposed 20 acre agricultural parcel, is planted in a vineyard, and this is also the parcel that the proposed roadway will cross through. This photo is taken, excuse me, looking north from the east side of the Woodbridge Irrigation District Canal, and we're looking at the site of the proposed residential subdivision. And this photo is taken from the western terminus of River Miss Drive, which was stubbed out for future residential development, and will be built out for the proposed subdivision. I won't read all of that. It is recommended that the planning commission forward the project to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendations contained on this slide.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Nice presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on... Okay, moving on to the applicant for their representation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Mike Hakem, 3414 Brookside Road in Stockton. With me here tonight is our engineer Cecil Dillon with Dillon &amp; Murphy, and also my co-counsel Eric Nims on the project. One of our clients is out of town, and the other client has the flu, so it's going to be the applicant and the team making the presentation this evening. As you know from the staff report, the application has four specific requests. The first is a general plan amendment to change the general plan designation of the 14.5 acres from ag urban reserve to very low residential. The second of the four requests is a zone reclassification from ag urban to very low residential. Third is a Williamson Act cancellation for the 1.57 acres to connect our subdivision with Woodbridge Road. The fourth and last of the requests is a major subdivision to divide the 14.5 acres into 26 residential lots. I want to stop there for a moment and make a point that I think is important. We are proposing 26 single family residential homes. This is less than one half of the density that would be allowed on that property, so we're asking, asking for half of the allowed density on the project, 26 instead of 55. We started this project with a pre-app in 2020, and we're very glad to have been closely working with staff these last years to bring this to you this evening. The project's been reviewed by 11 county departments, four state agencies, three federal agencies, 10 local agencies, and 12 interested local entities. Regarding services, as the staff report indicates, and as Alisa's given you information, Woodbridge Sanitary District will provide wastewater, and McCollum Acres Maintenance District will provide water and storm. We currently have a general plan designation of ag urban reserve, and I think that's important because that was designated by the Board of Supervisors in 2016 as ag urban reserve. As you know, ag urban reserve is a planning designated holding area for eventual residential development, and the Board of Supervisors basically designated this property for eventual planned residential development back in 2016. The Woodbridge community to our east probably either doesn't know or appreciate that one of the conditions, this is another important point of the project, and it was commented on and by the staff in the staff report, as well as by Alisa in her presentation, condition 2G of the Wynwood Estates project adjacent to us requires them and mandates that they have a connectivity with the eventual project to the west, which is us. So the eventual planning program, back when they planned the original Woodbridge subdivision Wynwood, was there'd be another subdivision next to it. Staff went to the difficulty and the requirement to force that project to keep a stub road at River Mist open for our project. So we're basically complying with not only the general plan, but the conditions of approval for the existing project. The opposition's raised six particular opposition concerns, and staff has gone through them. I won't go through all six in detail, but I'll mention, staff's determined that we're consistent with the general plan as being designated by the Board of Supervisors in 2016. We will participate in the county development title program to mitigate ag land and also in the cog habitat conservation plan. All of our develop will meet the standards of the development title regarding any flood hazards. Ironically, we're the same flood elevation as the project next to us. On the traffic issue, I think it's fair to comment that the residents of our project will be using our new road to the south. It's not logical that the residents in our project would use River Mist and wind their way through the Wynwood subdivision to get access out from the subdivision. It's way more likely that the residents of our project will use the immediately adjacent roadway to Woodbridge and not travel or traverse through the Wynwood project next door to us. The staff recommendation is for approval. We respectfully request that you follow the staff recommendation and the findings and attachments GH and I. We have a serious housing deficiency in Salakin County, and this is a strong effort to add 26 homes to the inventory for Salakin County residents. We have 51 conditions of approval, all of which we intend to abide with. It's a logical and orderly and well-planned project, supported by staff, and we respectfully request your support tonight for that approval and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'll save some rebuttal time after we hear from the opposition, and I'm looking forward to answering any questions now or later as they occur from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, not this time. Thank you. Any other folks that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant in attendance or Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the opposition. Anyone that is here that would like to oppose this project, please come up now. Okay, not seeing anyone moving. Anyone online? Nothing online, okay. I don't think you need your rebuttal time. Okay. This time, we'll bring it back to the commission. At, at this time, we just had the housing element speak. We need housing. It's a very clear cut, even from the aerial photo. This project fits very well with that area. I don't, I can't even come up with anything to, yeah, I think.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
We got a motion.
Yes. We accept staff's recommendation to approve the four applications presented tonight, along with the, I actually know how, oh, it's numbered for me, 11 recommendations, as provided by staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Tsang Ha?
Yes.
Commissioner Milas?
Yes.
Commissioner Mijli?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruustaller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gruski?
Yes.
Pass is five zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, general plan amendment, amendment number PA 2300143.
Thank you, Chair. We actually have to switch again.
We can give, need a couple minutes, or are we okay?
I think, I think that would be great, just a couple minutes, yeah.
We're gonna pause for a couple minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Anderson, contract planner with the county develop, uh, Community Development Department, working exclusively on Mountain House matters. As, as normally the case with my Mountain House projects, unfortunately, I like to kill as many trees as I possibly can. This is a major project. We've got a couple of major projects coming before you that we've been working on for the last year and a half or so. This is just one. There's another one coming up at your next meeting. Sorry about that, but there are some things that have been going on for quite some time. This application tonight, being presented to you, is kind of a combined application, if you will. I, anytime we make modifications to the master plan in Mountain House or affected specific plans, we do our best to try to combine these efforts whenever we can. In this case, I took the liberty to combine two particular applicants into this application because they both involve specific Plan Three. There was also some adjustments that the Community Service District wanted to make as it relates to their parks and open space plan, and those are also incorporated into this, this document as well. So it's got many different aspects to it. The, the driver for the entire project is the mapping effort, and the mapping effort is separated up into three independent parts. So after having given you that general overview, I'll, I'll go into my PowerPoint presentation. I did present to you one single page, and I know there's been a lot of public discussion, opposition, last-minute emails on this project specifically, but I wanted to give you one particular page out of specific Plan Three that talked about schools, and I highlighted some specific language that I'll go over as part of my presentation. So it's a good start and intro for, for this discussion tonight with us. I have folks in the audience that are obviously in opposition that want to speak, but I also have tonight Steve Pinkerton, who's the general manager of the Mountain House CSD, in the audience, in the audience. I have applicant and applicant representatives also in the audience, including Jerry Camillus, who is the master developer behind specific Plan Three. I also have Kerry Wallace, who is with the engineering company McKay &amp; Psalms, who prepared the application packages that we're reviewing tonight. And I also have Dave Sargent, who represents Mike Sandu, MHD slash Recuro Capital, who's actually physically the owner of the school site, the K8 site that we'll be talking about in just a bit. So they're all in the audience as well, so just to let you know about that. Let me go next. So what we have is proposed amendments to the, to the 2035 County General Plan. We have proposed amendments to the Mountain House Master Plan, proposed amendments to Mountain House specific plans one, two, and three, really focused on three, and then proposed zoning reclassification, and then, as I said earlier, the driver, which are the three major subdivision maps that are also part of this application that we're considering tonight. As you're aware, Mountain House is a large master plan community. It was originally approved back in 1994. Specific Plan Two was approved back in 2004, and then ultimately in, in 2005, Specific Plan Three and its EIR was, was approved for that particular development area. There are three primary properties involved. Property one is a, is a small piece of property, 0.7 acres. It's residual acres that was set aside for open space initially, and it's proposed to go to medium density residential with the opportunity to create five lots as, as presented in the mapping. Property two involves, again, a general plan amendment, master plan amendment, change of land use. This is a reduction in the, in the south community park to meet the minimum community park standard of 20 acres. It's, this is consistent, this action is consistent with what the Mountain House Community Service District has adopted as part of their Parks, Open Space, and Leisure Plan, and it, and it forwards their, their recommendations for long-term maintenance obligations for all of their park systems, including the south park. And then ultimately culminates in a tentative map of the 6.77 acres into 61 lots. Again, that's the driver for that application. The third property is, is a piece of property that was designated for a potential elementary school site. This is an elementary school site that ultimately was, was planned as part of the original master plan, but determined by the Lammer'sville Unified School District that it was not needed. In essence, Evelyn Costa Elementary School ultimately has been built and now is occupied, at least as a Phase One construction, is envisioned to accommodate the population growth, student population growth of the college park area, which is primarily the area south of, of Grantline. And then again, so this involves a zone change, and then, and then, of course, a division of the 17 acres into 115 lots. So those three properties that I've just gone over are referenced here with, how do I, is there, what can I do to, is there, press and hold the top button? Oh, there we go. So property one is up in this area. As, as I've described, again, it's a 0.7 acre piece that was left over for, you know, open space or storm drain. It's residual property. Parcel two is here, which is the southern edge of what will be the south community park. And then parcel, property three is here, which was the originally designated K8 site as part of the specific Plan Three development plan. Again, we're, what we're doing would be consistent with that 2020 Parks and, Parks and Leisure Plan that was prepared and ultimately adopted by the CSD. And there was a workshop, we'll talk a little bit more about that. The, Jerry Camillus did hold a community workshop to attempt to at least describe what's going on with the development down in here. In a little, little bit additional detail that was held last week, both myself and my senior planner, Brad Wall, were in attendance of that discussion, just to make sure that the information that was conveyed was accurate. And it was a meeting that was pretty well-held. I would say there was 30 to 35 individuals that are very interested in what's going on in the college park development area specifically, and I believe a majority of those folks are in the audience tonight. And then, part of this effort is to, to make sure that we can fold in many of the recommendations that were made as part of the Parks and Leisure Plan into the policy documents for Mountain House, both in the specific plans and also in the master plan. And this is an illustrative, if you will, of the, of the master, master parks planning effort that ultimately was settled upon by the CSD, and in essence, this is an effort to, to implement what was previously adopted by the CSD. There are a number of areas that we are still working on. There's an area up in the north where they've got the former golf course that's now being converted into a looped community park that we are just now resolving acreage and determinations with MHD, Dave Sargent and his group. That'll be part of a future application that I don't believe this commission will see. It'll probably end up being an item that'll be settled through the city of Mountain House just as it relates to timing. But primarily, we're focusing on, you know, southern area, and again, the CSD plans to deliver a community park of 20 acres as part of this commitment, and then, of course, the corridors that are adjacent to that, that are both transmission lines as well as PGE gas lines. So that's all part of their Parks and Leisure Plan. So the, the specific plan does call for two elementary school sites to be set aside and reserved. There is very specific language in the specific plan that I've provided to you tonight, and it kind of highlighted in page five dash two, and at the end of that paragraph, as part of the original write-up that was ultimately adopted by the Board of Supervisors, it really says that if the school district is an independent body, I'm adding lib there a little bit, you know, decides to consolidate the schools into one campus with the design capacity, then, then this, one of the school sites then could be made available, and an applicant, the property owner, could submit a, an application to redesignate the land, you know, to some other use, which is what is being proposed here. The, the, the school district, unfortunately, representatives aren't going to be here tonight. I, I can't speak for them. I can, however, share with you, and I have in the staff report, specific email communication between the county, between us and the school district relative to this issue specifically. So there's additional detail, an email, there's excerpts of that email physically in the staff report that I brought forward. The school district has determined that this is surplus land that they do not need to meet the school's needs for this community. So again, they're an independent body, they make those decisions. It's not really up to us to question what those decisions are, and, you know, we're moving forward. So that asks a So that has to do with, again, Property Three, which is privately owned, has not, never been transferred, ownership has never been transferred to the school district, nor has it been transferred to the Community Service District. So we're basically following the rules that we have as prescribed in the specific plan, and then, of course, with acknowledgement from the school district that this is considered to be surplus development property. These are, again, the drivers for this whole effort. This is the first map. This is, you know, the opportunity to create five lots here. One lot's very narrow, it's going to take some very unique design characteristics. We have met and have been working with the property owner just to the north, Cindy Sosa and her husband. There was some concern about what this edge, this edge between Grantline Village, the northern boundary of this property, and the community of the new community of Mountain House through specific Plan Three. The specific plan talked about some type of an agricultural fence to separate the two land uses. It's not really something that's appropriate for this type of condition, and what we're recommending is either a masonry wall and/or masonry wall and a good neighbor fence, depending on what the grade conditions is between those two properties. So that's one of the changes, clarifications, I should say, that we're making in specific Plan Three to use this type of construction technique rather than just a split-rail fence, which really doesn't do much between this more urban use and the rural uses to the north. Property Two, again, this is, represents a reduction of the South Community Park by the acreage prescribed, leaving the 20 acres for ultimate park development, which is will be administered by the CSD according to their schedules and funding availability. Here's kind of a blow-up of what that project would look like, and it's designed, and it's my understanding, will be built by the same builder to the south, Century Builders, but it's designed to meet and to match or mirror what's been built to the south. And then Property Three, which is the K8 site, that was initially envisioned for a K8 site, and there's two components to this development, is the extension of the neighborhood park in compliance with the requirements the CSD has imposed, again, to be consistent with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that they adopted, and then, of course, the creation of the residential lots as a change in land use based on the decision that was made by the Community Service District not to build yet another K8 site on this property within specific Plan Three. So this gets back to the following recommendations. I have seven recommendations, couple obviously have been combined. We had the applicant prepare a sequoia addendum to address these project-related issues specifically. That's part of the recommendation that you'll be making to the Board of Supervisors, along with the recommendation to amend the general plan, the Mountain House Master Plan, Mountain House specific plans one, two, and three, the zone reclassifications that have been suggested, as well as the three independent maps as referenced in my presentation. So I know it's a lot of documentation. Thank goodness we can use hyperlinks because some of the documents I have are fairly lengthy, but we're here to answer any questions that you may have regarding this, and then, of course, I know there's folks in the audience that would like to address this project as well.
Thank you. And just to be clear, is it five lots? I want to say 26 and 115, or what was the lot numbers?
I, let me go back. Go back here, let me go back. So again, five lots, and then 61 lots, and then ultimately the 115 lots. And I'm talking, when I say lots, I'm talking lots, residential lots, because on a couple of the projects, either they're creating additional opportunity for a neighborhood park, or they're creating a parcel that could be dedicated to the Community Service District for road purposes, as an example.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission?
Here, if I may?
Go ahead. Where are we looking?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we got you, Commissioner Sanger.
Thank you. So I want to say something on the record here. Being the Commissioner for District Five, I wanted to say this, that I have met with the community members of the College Park last year in summer, and Mr. Jerry Camillus was there to answer the questions. They had contacted, the community members had contacted Supervisor Whitman regarding some questions they had, and Supervisor Whitman told them to contact me as a planning commissioner, and since we did not have anything on the agenda at that time, I heard them, and we had some questions.
Commissioner Sanger, this is Jennifer. I apologize for interrupting you, but we're having a difficult time hearing you, so I don't want you to have to say everything twice. So if you could just pause for one moment while we figure out why we can't hear you very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we okay to proceed? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner, let's see if we can hear you. Thank you.
So again, I just wanted to say this on the record, that I met with the community members of College Park last year at my place of business in Tracy with their request to meet the developer, Mr. Jerry Camillus. And after that, since nothing was on the agenda, I did not have any answers for them. I did tell them that when it does come on the agenda, we will have a discussion. And it was on social media last week that they were going to have a public hearing or a public notice for folks to get together and speak to the developer. And last week, I did attend the meeting at the Evelyn Costa School last Thursday at 7:00 PM. I was there for a couple hours, and I wanted to hear both sides, since this is on the agenda now, to see what was the opposition all about and what was the recommendation. And I did understand, and I did make a comment, that since the CSD and the Lammer'sville School District, which are both made of elected officials, have recommended what was recommended on the agenda item, that there was no need for the school, and also, you know, the school that we were sitting at the given time was made and was covering up the population. That was the requirement at that given time. The reason for me to make this comment is I would like to make it very clear that I've been serving as the commissioner for over 10 years, and I do understand my responsibilities, and the purpose of my visit to that meeting, which was open to the public, which I did say that I had to declare that I'm also a commissioner, a planning commissioner of District Five, was to hear both sides. So when I'm going through the agenda item, I can make my decision or my finding accordingly. I would like to have that on the record, and that should be all. Thank you.
Thank you for the disclosure, Commissioner. At this time, if we could hear from the applicants.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Jerry Camillus, and I'm here as the applicant, and also here as the primary developer of the College Park portion of Mountain House. I actually submitted the application for College Park 22 years ago, and have nurtured the development of College Park since that time, including advocating and successfully securing the community college, ensuring the implementation of all the infrastructure that you see in College Park today, as well as implementing the completion of a widening of Grantline Road. In addition to that, the discussion today with respect to the three properties were actually contemplated in the specific plan that we prepared over almost 20 years ago, and that ultimately the CSD would go through a process of ultimately preparing a Parks and Recreation and Leisure Master Plan, and right-size and balance the park system for the totality of the community, including the North Park, the Central Park, and South Park, and be able to balance it out, not only with the needs, the facility needs of the population that's projected, which is over 16,000 units, but also...
He was out of breath and trembled.
So that over 16,000 units and according population. And so the CSD went through this process, it was about a two-and-a-half-year, three-year process, that included community inputs, workshops, detailed, and ultimately the CSD, which, you know, is now going to become the city council, adopted it in May of 2021, and we have all been, those that are part of the implementation of Mountain House, have been relying on that document, and thus the application that are before you today. With regards to the school site, that provision that John passed out, I wrote, and the reason why that was there wasn't because we were going to build two school sites, was that it was going to be one site or the other, and at the time, to get the application processed, we identified two school sites, but ultimately, one would be chosen. And actually, we dedicated the school site to the school district and added, instead of 16 acres, which is typical, we added another two acres in order to make sure that the capacity to service College Park was there. And so that property that is currently owned privately and is being mapped, that's an important property, and the reason why is because in College Park, in the undeveloped portion of College Park, there's going to be a CFD form in Boncel that will help facilitate not only the financing of the remainder of the school, but also put in facilities like the community park that we're discussing this evening. So the applications that are before you tonight are perfectly aligned with what was contemplated in the specific plan, in the development agreements, and so we obviously support the recommendation of staff to move forward with approval. And just to let you know, we take our role seriously in College Park. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, we held actually two community meetings. One, I participated in for about 90 minutes a year ago, and met with many of the people in the audience tonight. And also, we had one just recently, last Thursday, and that went from, it was planned to go from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and we stayed, I stayed until the last question was asked and answered at about 9:40 in the evening. And what my takeaway from that was, it's not the site issue that is the primary concern. Concern is, when are the neighborhood park, when is the community park going to start? And the neighborhood park, we are planning to start construction on the neighborhood park this year, and then the CSD has plans on implementing as soon as possible the community park. We're preparing right now, based on the direction tonight, is we still own the community park, and we're planning to prepare, you know, to dedicate the community park as soon as we're finished with this process. But, and then finally, on the school, there's plenty of documentation from the school district that the sizing of Evelyn Costa School is appropriate for the growth of College Park and the needs of the overall district. And the school district has put that in writing, I believe that's part of your staff report. So I really appreciate your time this evening. It was interesting with the microphone, but I'm sure that person had some things to say. But anyway, I appreciate your time this evening and your efforts. If you have any questions on me, I'm prepared to answer them now. I do ask, at the end of the public comment period, that I'd be allowed to answer any questions maybe that were brought up during that portion. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other applicants that would like to speak?
Hi there, my name is David Sargent. I represent Rucker Capital, which is one of the applicants on the project specifically for the school site that Jerry was referencing. And Jerry did a great job of presenting the overall project, so I don't have much to add, but just thank you, thank the planning commission for hearing the item, and thanks to the county staff for processing the application and recommending the approval. So I hope you guys can recommend approval to the board this evening. You'll likely hear some opposition to the project tonight, and mostly about the concerns about the school capacity at the K8 school. Jerry did a good job of explaining kind of the history on that, so I don't want to have to repeat all that, but, you know, and I think the superintendent has done a pretty good job of explaining how he's confident there is capacity and there's room for future students there, so, which supports the school district decision to put all the kids at the one school site with the existing Evelyn Costa School. So that, the property, it's currently Rucker Capital property. As it's not being used at the school site, it'll be revert back to, or it'll stay with Rucker Capital, and be rezoned for residential for future development. So thank you guys for, thanks to the planning commission for hearing the item, and I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have about our portion of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for the applicants that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll take someone from the opposition to come up and speak against the project. We're going to limit it to five minutes per speaker, and we also are going to ask that we do not be repetitive. We'd like you, and I'll be reminded, we'd like you to make a different argument than the people before you have, and I will stop and comment to say, please move on from that point and find something else. At this time, we'll hear opposition from someone here in the crowd, if they would
I would like to speak.
Yes, we're going to do in-person first, and then we'll get to online. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chair Gransky, and the commission members for this opportunity to speak. First, you know, I do want to thank Jerry for meeting with the community, although, you know, there were fewer members than expected because it was on social media, and, you know, not many of us are on social media. But again, thank you, Jerry, for providing a lot of good information about the history of College Park, things that were done to get Delta College over there, and all of that information. I'm here to speak in opposition because, so here's some background, you know, LUSD has a school facilities master plan that runs from 2018 to 2028, okay? And they have projections for enrollments in this master plan, and those are, you know, this is some of the information that's been used to identify how many schools would be needed. However, things have changed since COVID. What has changed is that there are a lot more, because availability for remote work, there are a lot more younger families that are moving to Mountain House, and we've seen this. I myself, you know, I moved to Mountain House in 2021, and the number-one reason that I moved and many of my neighbors moved to Mountain House is because of the great schools in Mountain House. There are no major employers in Mountain House, there is, you know, nothing, no major tourist attractions, it's the schools. We moved to Mountain House, many of us, because of the schools. So that's the main attractions for families that are moving to Mountain House, and what's that done is that it's kept the student... And what's that done is that it's kept the student gen, it's changed the student generation rates. Those student generation rates are higher than what's used in specific Plan Three than what's used in the Mountainized Facilities Master Plan. Okay, those student generation rates you will see haven't changed. That that L U S use that you see in the master plan haven't changed in last twenty years. But the actual student generation rate last five years is very different, you know? So. The actual enrollment in K eight schools has exceeded L U S D's projections. In twenty nineteen, the actual enrollment was two hundred and eighty nine students more than projected. In twenty 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 one, it was three hundred and forty four students more than projected. In twenty twenty one twenty two, it was four hundred and sixty one students more than projected. In twenty two twenty three, it was five hundred and thirty seven students more than projected, okay? And this difference itself is enough to, you know, warrant revaluation of those student generation rates that have been used, okay? And. The school facilities master plan at that time called for two K eight schools, okay? The major reason why L U S D chose with one school as opposed to two smaller schools, one bigger school as opposed to two smaller schools is financial reason. The California Department of Education says smaller schools are better. Larger schools, there are issues, more social issues, more classroom disruptions. Teachers don't like to teach in larger schools, so there are all these issues that come up with large schools. But given the financial situation, given the money that L U S D has, you know, there's really no money. They had to go with one school. So it was a financial decision. And I think this is also a reason why. We need to make this decision based on current data, more revised data based on the student generation rates of the last five years. Because of COVID, things have changed. You know, if I can actually quote.
Sir, we probably not have time. I only got ten seconds left on the five minutes.
Sure. So I have, again, I have this information here, you know, if I can share it with the. Planning Commission, this is data, this is the projections, this is the actual enrollments and the difference in enrollments.
Can I ask a question? Where did you get that information again? Did you get that from Lamont Trail?
Sure, this is from the reports that Lamont Swill Elementary School publishes every month. This is their enrollment reports and this is, you know, data. Thanks, you know, Steve Pinkerton, he does publish the number of units that are completed every month as well. So this is from the data that M H C S D and L U S D is given. And student generation rate is basically how many students are you generating for every unit? Okay, so it's not rocket science to calculate it. The California Department of Education has guidelines on how to do it. It's just a ratio. And you'll see those ratios are much, much higher than what L U S D is using.
I have one more question. Did you address these issues with the school board itself? I mean, they have a meeting every month. Did you go and say, listen, your numbers aren't jiving?
Yeah, we we have talked to the school. We don't have, so that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for time so that the school district can update, use recent data. They can use recent data to update their student generation rates because this may warrant higher developer fees. So that we can adequately support those school facilities that are needed, right? So right now, you know, the decision to go with one school was financial. But we have more students coming in. It's a great school district, great teachers, great schools. You know, we don't want to ruin that. We may need more money to do that. If the student generation rates are actually higher, then we do need to revise that justification for developer fees, right? So I'm asking for time so that the school district can use past five years data, right? Data post-COVID. And let's see what those numbers say. If those numbers say what they're saying now, I'm okay with it. If they say something different, if they say that that developer fee justification needs to be revised. If they says that those last five years, the student generation rate is different, which we are hearing, right? You've heard that California, the demographics are changing, people are moving out of Bay Area. They're moving to Mountain House. It's a great place. That's one of the reasons why I moved there, but more younger families are moving there. So I'm asking that we update that data, we base our decisions. I really appreciate that we have a planning commission. We develop things in a planned way based on current and reasonable data. That's how that's what I'm asking for, that we base this decision based on the actual student generation rates of last five years, not the ones that we had twenty years ago.
Noted, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Louisiana Pham. I am a resident. Of Mountain House in the College Park Village. I'm also a member of the P T A. I came here because just last week I presented before the CSD about issues of safety. At Costa Elementary School with the current conditions and with the current capacity. I brought you here a map to show. The route that students and parents are taking during drop off time. Our school has two drop off lanes. This builder only built two drop off lanes for the school, which is double capacity. The reason why it's double capacity is because originally, as Jerry mentioned, twenty years ago. College Park was supposed to be two sections, A and B. Section A had a school for K through eight and section B. They've combined those two schools because of cost into one school that will hold double capacity of nine hundred forty seven students. Right now, we have roughly six hundred something students. And we're already seeing a bottleneck at the drop off site where every day you can see that students are almost getting run over by cars. Why? Because the infrastructure that exists is not safe. The speed limit signs have light light poles in front of them blocking the speed limit signs. In front of the schools, they're missing speed limit signs and no stopping signs. So cars are chaotically trying to drop off children. And many intersections are coming into one place in order to drop off children. So the the cars are dodging the children and the children are dodging the cars. And that's only at six hundred something students. Imagine when this school gets up to nine hundred forty seven on a smaller site like this. With no indication of expansion in any of the application documents or any of the L U S D paperwork. I'm asking you to consider that there may have been some premature planning. Because when they say that they've met with us, I signed my purchase agreement in twenty twenty. And I was delivered my house in April twenty twenty one. The meeting, the first meeting for the workshop was May twenty twenty one. And I never knew about it. And my mom had a heart attack. She's also a co-owner of the home. And or not a heart attack, a heart surgery. So in all that time, we were not able to participate in said workshops. And if you ever looked at the workshops, for instance, the one that was said to be posted on social media. Somewhere through the grapevine, I got a link to a Facebook post. And that Facebook post was four days ahead of that meeting. And only about ten to fifteen people showed up because most applicants of the thousands of people that live in College Park. They didn't know about that, that information, that informal meeting that Jerry was facilitating. And actually, tonight, you know, a lot of people in our WhatsApp group, we have over five hundred people in the WhatsApp group. We posted the the letter that you sent us for tonight's hearing. Your letter has a broken link. They were not able to attend on on Microsoft Teams because the the link was broken. One of the people who showed up today actually came up to somebody here and asked for the proper link. We reshared that link. But many of my neighbors that are just reading the letter that you signed cannot log in. So I don't know that notifications were given out fairly. Or people were actually allowed to attend to voice any of the ideas that could have made this application better for everyone. So can I share with you the map so you can take a look at the bottlenecks?
Sure, I believe that's that's we're at time now. We will take a peek at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting the timer on. I was using my phone. Thank you. And if someone else would like to speak and make their way up while we are handing this out. I'm sorry, I can't. And anyone else that would like to speak after this gentleman, please just come up to the front row and form a line.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. First of all, thanks for giving me this opportunity because. It took for us a lot of time to figure out, you know, whom to approach when we first heard about this school rejoining and also the park rejoining. We went to C S D and they pointed us to L U S D and L U S D pointed us to developers, then it was a circle and then. We were we were able to, you know, finally dig dig into a lot of facts. We spent a lot of time actually to really understand, you know, what is what is going on. So I think my friends already spoke about it. I also want to add some more numbers. So today, the Costa Elementary School actually with, you know, twenty three per classroom. Can can, you know, accommodate only six hundred and ninety students, but it is projected as nine hundred forty two, okay? Even if we take a maximum of thirty plus students, it will come to nine hundred forty. So this is cool, you know, is termed as big school, but it's not actually. This is. I would say this is the smallest school in the current Mountain House in compared to all other elementary schools. Because other schools has at least thirty classrooms, what this this school has plus. There are more number of, there's some schools has thirty thirty six classrooms, some school has forty plus classrooms also. You know, but still this school is termed as, okay, we built a big, big school for the entire community. But the S P three is also stating that, you know, the total housing units gonna be two thousand five hundred without rezoning some of these lands. So with this with this housing unit and you know, the student generation rate, the current student generation rate or even the projected ones. Will bump the, you know, total students to fifteen hundred minimum to two thousand plus students, right? So one school is not enough. So if we lose the school site today, we will not get this later. And the one pattern I'm seeing is that there are a lot of. Residential, you know, planned residential sites that are not being developed, but only trying to rezone the school site and the park lands. That is one pattern we are observing. And the other one is that L U S D today, Mountain House, Mountain House High School is also in overcrowded. They are putting, you know, temporary classrooms and, you know, they're sending the kids and they just decided to move. The play area from the Mountain House High School to two blocks away. So all the students of two thousand five hundred overcrowded students will have to go to this two blocks away play area and then come back every day. I don't know how I imagine I have a first grade kid and seventh grade kid. By the time they go, it's it's going to be very messy. So the same mistakes are going to happen in this school district, in the school. In the College Park School, the second school, by the by removing that, this school, it 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 will be very dense and, you know, it's it's not at all. In par with other school in the creating a differentiation. And just to mention, I mean, I would like to add, right, so the predominantly this College Park area. Community is moved during pandemic or after pandemic. And predominantly, they're all like migrants and colored people and the quality of it is not so good. Today, we don't have a single park. The this this school is getting dense and and they were only showing like one third of the. Residential units are built. And we already have like six hundred thirty two students already in there. Now, if it becomes triple, that will multiply. Even if it's not multiply, actually, it is not triple. We 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 looked at all the maps. We analyzed it. So it's actually as per the plan, it's like almost four times of the houses are coming in, two thousand five hundred plus. So by the time we were coming here and settling down, we already, we didn't know what is rezoning also. We we realized that there are three hundred eighty eight apartments were approved already, you know, you know, to twenty twenty two next to the our community. And we have measured the distance from those areas and the current areas to the school. It's already one point four miles. So this is generating a lot of traffic to the current school today. And 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 in imagining, you know, it is three times or four times is going to be very, very difficult. And that's exactly what I think the previous my friend submitted, right? And again, the College Park area land is so big, it's like almost nine hundred seventy or so acreage. Whereas compared to any other two villages I combined is almost like five hundred acreage. Just for five hundred acres, there are two schools, but nine hundred acreage. Even if I remove all commercial lands or, you know, the Delta College lands, it is still a very big land is is bigger than any. Any combined two villages within Mountain House. And we have only one school. And if we lose this school site, it will be like it's gone forever and again. As everyone else, I also came here just for my kids and, you know, I have some some time to to have, you know, granary. But that the parking, the the South Park lands is also, you know, I saw the graph.
We're we're at time, sir.
Yeah.
We're gonna let someone else speak now.
Just like, almost like that that was showing as like a minimal, actually, it is like almost half of that park is going to be rezone. And, you know, we are traveling fifty to seventy miles every day to office, to Bay Area.
Understood. I would like someone else to speak. Five minutes is enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I I should want to please understand and.
You got it. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, if anyone would like to speak, please go to the front row so we know.
Hi, thank you all. This is my first hearing, so I just don't know how things work, but I just want to speak my mind about this particular issue. First and foremost, when we're trying to make a decision, we always want to understand anybody has any interest in this, right? I'm a College Park resident and I have to tell you that the decision that today, you know, we're talking about this. It's not going to impact me personally. It's just not. Part of the reason is because we are talking about growth of the Mountain House, right? I think College Park in general. And it's and what I don't want us to be in, when I try to, when we try to plan things, right? We don't want to, we always want to avoid not getting into one way doors, right? And this is a one way door. The reason why I think is just remember only, I know we talked about so many numbers. Main members that really matter is just two. That is, College Park, currently the school, can accommodate nine hundred and fifty students. Today, we have already six hundred fifty students already going there. You know how many houses have been constructed so far? Just one third of it, just one third. So which means two third of the houses have to be yet to be built, right? And remaining students, maximum three hundred, three hundred students it can accommodate. So you're looking at at least easily another thousand students there, right? Even by rough approximation, right? Even minimum thousand students. So what does this mean? This mean all the newer families who are going to buy their houses in Mountain House, they have to send their kids into a completely different school neighborhood, right? And we have experienced this. This is something that we experienced as a family. When we landed in Mountain House, there is no school. There is no school in College Park. We have to send my son to a completely different village, which is about two miles, right? It's not the end of the world. Maybe some of you may think it's a first of all problem, right? But for a kid, it is bigger. He couldn't make friends because everybody else is in the same neighborhood. They just go out after school and then they play, right? It means a lot. It means a lot for a kid perspective. But again, I just want us to all of you to think about so many numbers, but these are the numbers that really matter, right? And again, going on, one more thing I want to tell you is. L U S D, right? I have a lot of respect for L U S D folks, and again, I haven't had direct interaction with L U S D. Probably I should have. With this, probably I'll definitely pay more attention going forward. But their numbers are all wrong. And it's been proven with high school, right? Imagine probably about ten years back, we might have a similar situation like where you guys, maybe not you, some others might be in the planning commission. At that time, LUSD must have said that, you know what, one high school is enough for Mountain House, right? That's good enough, right? Everything was perfect for a while. But then, for variety of reasons, my friends already, you know, told. So the newer demographics came into picture. All young families, they came to Mountain House. Now, kids per home ratio increased, right? Now, one high school is not enough. Now, guess what, what we did? We applied a Band-Aid. Meaning, we have one high school in one location. After half a mile, we're gonna extend the same high school into and then we provide, I don't know, more classrooms there. Now what? This is Band-Aid situation. This is exactly, you know, it's like a deja vu. It's gonna happen again unless we do something about it, right? So at least what I would like to tell you is, I think the situation at least warrants a pause. Try to understand and ask LUSD to represent here, represented from LUSD. Hear them out, right? We have, these are our concerns, right? I want them to come here in front of you and then make their case, right? This is really important because when we are trying to make decisions that doesn't impact us, we all have even bigger responsibility, right? Because again, this decision is not going to impact me personally today. I am fighting for people who are going to buy houses in Mountain House or in College Park, maybe two years, three years down the line, right? We all want to make a better community in general. So that's my two cents on this. I just want to again recap. Only numbers that matter is nine fifty, six fifty, and only one-third of the homes are built in Mountain House. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Amit Kumar and I'm resident of College Park. So I moved to College Park, Mountain House in twenty-twenty-two, January twenty-twenty-two. So at that time, actually, when I bought the home, actually, it was shown in the map by the builder. I know the builder is not involved here actually in this whole discussion, but it was shown that there will be a big park without this size and there will be two schools at this side. And these many homes will be built here. So the assumptions and calculations and understanding was that these things will be more than sufficient actually to support the infrastructure, support the number of the students there. Now, what happened is actually, the one fact I want to put before the commission is that the College Park is the biggest community inside the Mountain House. And I would like to quote something from this application that says, and I quote, "LUSD designed and constructed the Evelyn Quest Elementary School to accommodate nine hundred forty-seven students rather than the typical LUSD K eight, K two-eight facility that accommodate four fifty to five hundred students." I would like the attention of the board here at this line where it says that the typical K two-eight LUSD facility accommodate four fifty to five hundred students, which is not a right assessment per my understanding because all the K two-eight schools in elementary school, K two-eight school in the Mountain House, they are all actually running with more than this, more than this capacity actually. Around, my estimate is around eight hundred plus students on average. Some are, I think, around nine hundred something. So this premise itself that this College Park Costa School is going to be built bigger. The single school is not correct here. So I would like to urge the board to actually to like ask LUSD as well to reassess. And as my other friends actually mentioned, that looks like this assessment that was made a few years back probably was not accurate with the current number and the growing population and probably the sudden influx that happened after the COVID. So that is my request to board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Thanks for all the planning members for listening to us. I would like to say I'm strongly opposing this planning rezoning application for variety of reasons. So the applicant and the planning member has quoted that the workshops were successful. None of these residents who are here in opposing this and voicing their opinion were taking any input because most of them have moved after twenty-twenty-one. So we don't know which community was involved in the workshops because all the kids that are going to school, most of them have moved after twenty-twenty-one. And we are facing the challenges. So I'm questioning the workshop and community process with the workshop that was done last year. Because you have to take the opinion of the neighbors who are living it and every day with all these concerns. So that's one point. And the other workshop that was done just one week ago, it was just a show and tell, right? It was on Facebook four days ago. And it was not even, there was no letters sent to any of the residents and it was just for taking photographs and showing that we have done it. And when this application, we got letters in October, one-thirty people opposed. What has the planning commission done in addressing those concerns? One-thirty people emailed and opposed this application. All they did was after six months, post it in Facebook and get a meeting where twelve people attended, where I think one of the planning members here was saying thirty-five people attended, but that was totally incorrect, right? There was peace officers, an LUSD board member. Why he is there, we don't know. There was a planning commission member. There were other officials from county. It felt like a little intimidating going in there because everybody is supporting the developer, right? So it was not a meeting that was conducive to, I mean, I thank Jerry that he gave all his time, but I didn't even understand why there were peace officers and all of that. But that whole workshop and community feedback gathering process was not done correctly. And we are also learning a lot. Mountain House has a complex history over twenty years. Mr. Jerry has said he is original member of College Park and he was a crucial member in bringing Community College to Delta College to Mountain House. If you are aware, I don't know how many of you are aware, it has a very chequered past. Mountain House residents have paid seventy million dollars. I might be wrong in my numbers. That's subject to correction. But only twenty-four million dollars worth of campus is there. And you can go see, it's just trailers, twenty-four trailers or boxes of trailers are there. It is not a college. And the Delta College diverted forty-six million funds somewhere else to Stockton. Why was there no planning or no simple agreement or a clause in the, when they are taking taxpayers' money? How can they route it to other campus? So this whole College Park has a very complex history. So, I mean, we can't just trust the experts. We are the, we are the community members. We are suffering it. And I urge the planning commission to listen to the residents who are suffering. Because with your decisions, all our lives are going to be impacted. And we are going to become a city. The people voted on July first. So I strongly urge Planning Commission to do the right thing. Differ this decision to the city so that we can go, the CSD meetings, if we go, there is a lot of history being told. Every time people say there's a history, but there's little chance or opportunity given for us to voice our concerns. And majority of the immigrants, majority of the residents in College Park are immigrants. So we could not use our vote to elect or change their, you know, status of the, I mean, we could not vote the right representatives who can listen to our concerns. So I urge the planning commission to do the right thing, to move this to the city. The decision needs to be at the city level and so that we can, they can hear all our residents' concerns. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you for tonight's opportunity. So I have two questions. I just want to question the CSD mentioning about unable to maintain the parks and recreation. So based on the documentation, there was this joint-use facility agreement between Delta Community College District and MHSST can made to support the park. And I don't know why that was not done. And the second thing is Mountain House pays special taxes for the parks and recreation every year. So when the people of the Mountain House is paying special taxes, apart from the property taxes, specifically for parks and recreation, why we are giving back our parks and parks to build more homes? Currently, the issue is a lot of overcrowded, overcrowded streets with additional units building. It takes three hours to reach from Mountain House to two oh five. Already, it's like two hours. Now, if you add more homes, there is no other way to go out. The only way you have to go through that is Altonmont Pass. And that one is takes, after the aqueduct, you will be having this Almoda County and they have a stop sign, right? So there are so many issues, the traffic wise, and nobody is designing it, right? You're saying that I am converting my park into more buildings and there is no traffic study done to see whether you can facilitate these additional units and the traffic that is going to generate. And the second thing is, why can't we have a park, open space, when it is already in the master plan? When you say it's a master plan, what is the point of changing the master plan every few seconds and saying that, oh, we are amending it, we are amending it? So what I am seeing is, if you have a master plan, there is a reason for that. You have a parks, there is all these things we bought into the homes because of the parks and more, you know, more space than in Sunnyvale or some other place. So now we are converting it into a overcrowded school and overcrowded parks. And there is one more thing I found is, in especially the College Park, we have mineral rights. I don't know what is this new thing, right? So the mineral right owners has more authority. So you have to give some space in the same parks for these mineral rights. So in the future, they may want to dig it there. I don't know what is that. So my point is, the CSD claiming that they cannot maintain the parks and it's questionable and it's a surprise since we are paying special taxes to them. Thank you very much.
Understood. Thank you.
Good evening, all the commission members. I would like to echo with all my fellow members have shared a lot of data on that. Like all my fellow members, community members, I've also moved from the Bay Area to the Mountain House just because I want to provide a good schooling for my daughter so that she can grow and become a great citizen. She is starting going to the elementary this year. She is the first time going to the elementary, Costa Elementary School. We're lucky to be, she's part of that school. With that being said, I'm here to strongly oppose the CSD application that has been submitted with the outdated data. That's one of our strongest reason. We know the ground reality. The ground reality numbers are speaking totally different what has been submitted. Our humble request here is to defer this application decision until the city officially forms city. As we all know that Mountain House residents overwhelmingly voted the, you know, become a city. We officially going to have a mayor and city from July. So the request here is to consider defer the decision until July so that the decision will be made with the best interests of the Mountain House based on the ground reality versus being the CSD application data has been projected with this outdated data, which is past five years back old data. So my request is to reconsider, again, closing my statement by saying my humble request is to defer the decision until July and I'm here to oppose this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. And just so, one second. And just so we're clear, we've covered the population of the schools, the traffic problems, the park issues. So let's keep that in mind.
Oh, yeah. I think most of the thing was related to the school. I'm more here for talking about the park, rezoning for the park that is gonna happen. So I'm strongly opposed of it. The reason, like what we are hearing is mostly for the park rezoning to having those additional sixty units of the meant-for-housing purpose. It's more like we have, like met couple of times with the CSD folks and developer also. And what we keep hearing is mostly on the financial constraint that it's kind of limiting us to, limiting them to, you know, rezone those park area. But for that, like, I mean, we are saying probably can't, can't they take some sort of a phase approach, right? Rather than, because we already see this case happening for the Central Park, which is one of the largest park in the Mountain House. That also is kind of currently taking a phase approach. It's not that everything is being planned in one phase and everything of the park will be developed in one phase. So why can't a similar approach be taken for the, for the South Community Park, right? That's one thing. And only if you see like the Central Park, currently, if you see the sports facilities that we have in that park is very much limited. Like we have just, I believe we have only two tennis court, one basketball court, and then there's an open park area for like picnic and all this kind of thing, right? And that was the main reason why I think they said that SCP, the South Community Park, would be the main sports hub for the College Park. It's not just for College Park, sorry. It will be for the entire Mountain House. So again, like rezoning that, having like multiple sports facility, the community center, the swimming pool, everything built in the South Community Park, definitely I feel that the thirty acres justify that deed for the thirty acre. And the last and the least, the last I would want to say is about the current, again, like the Central Park, the most of the issue, like when we have any events, it's already congested with the, like we don't find any parking spot. We have to like park very far and then we have to walk all the way to the park, right? So if we are trying to concentrate all our development, because what we are seeing is most of the sports-related things are also going to happen at the Central Park, which I think will increase the foot traffic over there. And then also the traffic part, which is already congested there, would be very much congested with more, more of the events that gets organized in that space, right? So if you are able to divert that traffic onto the other park, right? Where we are saying that this is gonna be the central sport hub for the Mountain House. So I think that again justifies for the thirty acre of the park that we have initially planned for. So I strongly oppose for the rezoning for the South Community Park.
Thank you very much. We're gonna take a five-minute break now so the commissioners can take a break for a second, regroup. Okay, thank you, we're gonna restart and.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. I'm here as a Mountain House resident to oppose this application which is seeking rezoning. So Mountain House, um, Special Plan Three was updated in May twenty twenty-one, when most of the residents of College Park were just trying to move into this village and were figuring out how to, you know, settle in this new place. So a lot of us didn't even know that there was something like this happening. We were sold a dream that we are going to have a house in Mountain House. And in fact, me and my daughter, my husband, we all thought, you know, a beautiful house amid greenery and mountains on around us. But look at what's happening two years after we moved here. All we see is rows and rows of houses, not a park to play, and kids are playing in the alley on the garage side because there is no greenery. And many times this has led to accidents, you know, where kids are trying to ride their bikes on the road. So this is a severe traffic, uh, safety hazard. And one thing what we have noticed is the development of the corridors, trails, the neighborhood parks, it's happening or it's being promoted on places which are under the power transmission lines. So that is the perfect wasteland. So no developer wants to build anything on that, right? So we are putting our kids at risk to play under the transmission lines. And we know what the Environmental Protection Agency says of the risk to everybody who spends little more than even thirty minutes to an hour under these transmission lines every day. Now, the South Community Park land or any other park land is a dead investment because it doesn't buy money. Rather, it's a money minting pit because we can build more and more houses and sell. And thanks to COVID, Mountain House has really been on an upswing in terms of the property rates. And everybody is moving this side because we all want a great future for our kids because it's a great school district. But who made this a great school district? It's our kids, it's our parents, it's our families. We are investing our time to make sure our kids really have a great future. And that is what is causing this school district to have amazing rating. And what are we doing to our kids? We are doing severe injustice by building more homes and doing more rezoning. So keep one thing in mind, we are not against housing development. In fact, we need more housing, we need to bring that into place. But it cannot go against the proper civic infrastructure. Our village and most of the Mountain House still lacks necessary public infrastructure. There needs to be a communication along with the stakeholders. Residents are the stakeholders. We are not here just to listen and, you know, the, the, the decisions are taken under our nose when we don't even know what is happening. I think that is what needs to change. And, and rightly so, Mountain House residents have voted this, you know, for incorporation of city. And we are going to be incorporated July one onwards. And then we'll have more powers as a city and as residents. For now, I really urge the Planning Commission to kindly reject this application. And in future, we would like to discuss with our city leaders and have our voice in the decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Lavanya. We moved to Mountain House three years ago, so, um, I like to tell a personal story. I don't wanna, I know people, my friends have covered a lot, so I don't recall the same thing. I know you understood the problem now, but I'd like to, uh, tell you the impacts of it personally experienced. So when we moved in twenty twenty-one, there was no school, that we knew that. It's, we knew and we made the choice without, um, knowingly that there is no school in the neighborhood. So my son was in eighth grade, he was sent to a Wyclan school, uh, which is two miles away. By the way, we moved from San Mateo and where my son used to go to a private school, which is twelve miles away. For us, like, oh, two miles away is just nothing compared to twelve miles. So we moved here and we're like, um, we were happy and we got, he got to Wyclan and was okay. And he used to be, you know, he made friends, fine, we were okay. It's a slow process, but then after some time, I mean, we saw him being a little bit sad, you know, I, then we, and we also noticed that he was not, I, um, you know, he was not asking to go and he was not playing with, with his friend. The reason is there was really no one that he knew in, in that neighborhood where we live. So we had to drop him in Wyclan Village. So we asked him, I'm ready to drop you anytime, anywhere, just tell me, go and play with your friends. He told only one thing. All, all my friends, all my classmates who are in Wyclan Village, they have kids, they live next to each other, they, they live close, they live in Wyclan Village. They just come out, knock their doors and they just call, hey, come, let's play, let's do some hoops. And, and at that moment, they don't even think about me because I live far because they know that, okay, I have to call him and he has to come over by then maybe their playtime is even over. So that, he went through a phase, he used to be pretty, pretty sad. Then at one point we felt like, is this the reason why we moved to Mountain House from San Mateo? Where our office was like five minutes away. Uh, so I, I just, I knew that today my son is in high school, he passed that phase. My daughter is in elementary, she's in that current Costa School. I'm not the one who's going to face that problem anymore, but I knew that I don't want any of my friends and neighbors to face the same problem because it'll be so sad to see our own kids being sad and lonely. I, I, I really don't want, I, I, thank God, I'm not in that state anymore. Uh, that, that's for that reason, I, I strongly oppose, uh, not having one more school and having, uh, other kids having to go to the other, uh, schools in the, uh, in the Mountain House. And I just want to make one more point about the, um, park. There is a rezoning proposed in the park as well and I see that it was written as six point seven acres. But, uh, I have, I, I, uh, I opened the Mountain House website and I see there, it's twenty acres, uh, is, is allocated for that. It was originally thirty-one acres and came down to twenty acres. I was surprised to see what, it clearly shows that eleven acres is gone. Then why is it shown as projected as six point seven instead of eleven acres? Um, yeah, I, I mean, that, these are the things I'm like, whatever, are they showing the numbers that are more convenient? Or are they not projecting the right numbers is really the question I have. I would be really happy to dig deep, but I really don't know other than depending on the Mountain House sources. Um, yeah, that's it, thank you so much.
Thank you. Looks like we got the, go ahead, we got the final one, then we'll go to online.
Yeah, this is, good evening commissioners. Um, so most of them, my fellow residents, you know, concerns we have. Um, the main concern from us is basically the capacity of the school. So I would like to request you guys, if you are going to approve today, uh, tonight, uh, could you please, uh, you know, uh, request the developers can reserve a few more acres of land for future expansion of the school? So that's what the, my request is. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Sindhu, uh, I'm from the, uh, College Park. I have the highest volunteer hours for the school volunteering. I volunteer almost my every free time. So I heard that from the school staff that they have tough time. All are talking about the capacity, so I don't want to talk about it. But the thing is, they don't have the, uh, playtime to give and share between the teachers because they have the little structure. And when I went to the Corde School, it is different that they have the play structures and everywhere it is less than that Corde's play structure to the Costa Elementary. Because of that, they are missing the playtime. And also we see the, there is a lot of sufferance in the, uh, library structure as well. I don't know how come this builders are saying that it is really they are having this capacity. And then, and one more point here is I just want to, uh, talk about the TK. TK is the one which College Park is serving other schools as well. So we have to consider that it is serving around sixty-two, eighty students of TK from other villages. So that is out of going from the nine forty-seven to the, subtracting the sixty-five. So it is something like we have to consider more onto the College Park. And I want to bring this back to the city and make that it is not going to be a final decision. And we completely oppose the rezoning. So we just want to, and I also have my daughter, we are talking so much every day in this rezoning. So I just asked her, do you want to give some points? She understood very well and she, in the car, she told, oh, I want new school because I miss, because last two years she went to the Corde's and now she want to meet the friends. So we don't want the next generation kids going to other schools and seeing that they miss the friends. The, so the point is here is, we know in the US, like we have the homeschool. The homeschool is very important to every child, so that is where we want to bring it up. And we are serving more than the capacity with other TK students, so it should be all, also considered into the plan. Uh, that is what, thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Vishnu, thanks for the opportunity. Um, I'm here to oppose this proposal. Uh, one of the main reason I think is like, the full picture is not brought to, uh, the commission at the being because, uh, apart from the three parcels that has been presented here, which is going to impact the school, we also were told that there are other hundred and forty homes that are already approved to be built. And then there's another parcel that's approved for home sites, which also both of these fall under the same school zone. So all these new homes that are already approved apart from which is going to be reviewed now, also fall under the same average Costa school. So, uh, we are only just talking about this three parcels being impacted on the school, but we are not talking about the others which are already approved which fall in the same school. So I think all this has to be considered as one unit because ultimately it's one school that everybody will go to and then it's the same infrastructure that all these communities are going to share, not just the three proposed parcels today. Uh, so that's one point I want to make out and, and thanks for that.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, everyone, uh, my name is Anil. I've moved to Mountain House, uh, in October or like November twenty twenty-one. Uh, I, I think like one other important thing that I want to, uh, request, uh, Planning Commission is that you guys can look at the, uh, the data, like when the houses were closed, like all these workshops, all were, were done, uh, before, like, I think I would say eighty percent of the current College Park residents moved in there. I don't have the data, but I think it's not hard to find like how many, uh, homes were closed and how many people moved in, uh, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, apart from that, uh, the other thing I wanted to bring to, um, your attention is the health risk, uh, imposed by constantly digging in the, in your neighborhood, right? Um, so there's this thing called, this is a study from C D C and California Department of Health, um, that there is a San Joaquin Valley fever. Uh, what this is, is, um, because of all these farmlands, you have, um, livestock, uh, they, they do defecation and other things and like there's a lot of, uh, things under the soil. As you keep digging in your neighborhood, the soil comes up and it moves into the residents' homes. And, um, here's a picture of dust. I, I really don't know if you can see here, but it's inside, uh, one of my neighbor's home. All these dust get into the home and it can actually, uh, uh, cause people sick. Uh, and it's not only humans, it's even, uh, your pets can, um, get sick. Uh, I just wanted to submit this paper to you guys, uh, for your regards. Um, so I, once again, urge, uh, the Planning Commission to reconsider their decision and kindly request, uh, push down on this approval and, and make the city council or the, the Mountain House city, uh, residents, um, work in the city's capacity to, uh, defend the case. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, thanks for your time. And my name is Satishan, I'm part of the College Park, um, resident. So one thing- So one thing which I, I think most of us have spoken about all the things, issues. But right now, we think like, we already have planned developments, which is like where we have open land area, which is available for building. And I'm not sure why this particular rezoning is part of the plan or the approval process is forced on now. When we have open areas where they can build us, can develop the plant, whatever development they want to make. And we can leave this decision because we already spoke about the schools and other stuff. But we can leave the decision to the city whenever the time comes where we are ready to go saying, okay, we don't have any, we don't need any schools, we don't need any, any other infrastructure. Then we can develop it rather than just rezoning it now. Because it's just, we are going to be a city soon and there is no point in just rushing it through now and then getting it developed. But we have hundreds, I mean, I can see a lot of acres of land which is open, which is already already for development. And we have planned for North Mountain House, which is already open for development, which is there. So I'm not understanding, or maybe I'm not able to comprehend why this rush to make this as a, and rezone this particular area now rather than waiting for the city. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. I have a small request. The current Central Park in Mountain House is four miles away from College Park. And for the kids in College Park, it's like the, one of the biggest neighborhood. Rezoning will make the kids to have a lesser facilities compared to, you know, what is planned in the master plan. If it is possible, try to keep the master plan as it is. And I oppose rezoning of this Central Park because of the facilities availability for the future kids. And it's going to be a thousands of the houses, not just few houses are coming up, but thousands and the dense housing is in the plan. So this actually gives the students, I mean, the kids in that area to have a facilities like to not to go four miles away from compared to, you know, what they visualize like is just their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going to online. I would like to remind everyone online to please, we've all listened to a lot of comments on similar comments and some different, but please try to keep a different perspective when speaking or provide a different perspective.
Okay, can I go?
Sure.
Yeah, so my name is Abhishek and I'm just going to add to what my neighbors have said so far. I first of all believe that being one of the major stakeholders on this project, all the neighbors here, I think it's important that we have a say in the final decision. Right now, I won't say outrightly I'm against rezoning. However, what I'm going to say is I think there should be a pause on the rezoning exercise and let the new city council make that decision. Because I feel this is an opportunity of a lifetime we have to decide how we want college back to be. And I don't think you should take that privilege from us. I mean, over, I think close to about thirty people have spoken so far. And it's kind of strange that nobody has actually come up in support of the developer. So I think that should go a long way to say that the people that are mostly, that are going to be mostly affected by the decisions that will be made here today have concerns. So I'm just going to plead with the commission that if you all came with a preconceived idea to approve the rezoning exercise today, I think you step back and take a rethink and read the writing on the wall that the actual stakeholders, the people that live in the community, our kids in the community are complaining. So that's all I'm just going to say. I just want us to just put a post to this and let the new city council make this decision of a lifetime. But affect all the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Can I go next? This is Sishil.
Yes, please.
I'm one of the residents in College Park. So I only have two requests. So I'm going to have a newborn and I want my kid to have a school in future and I want to have a park for my kid in future. And what I heard is if we don't do the rezoning, we'll not have park near future. I'm talking about the community park, not the neighborhood park. So if that is the case, I will support the rezoning of the community park, but I will still like to oppose the rezoning of the school because there are evidence as of today that that school may not be sufficient in the future. So I'm personally talking from my point of view and for my kid, if in future, if he suffers because of the rezoning of his school, I don't want to have that. So I want to partially oppose this application where we are requesting for rezoning of the school. But I would like to have the park because I was told in previous meetings that if we don't rezone the park and don't build the new homes there, there won't be any fund for CSD to build the park, not even in next ten or twenty years. And I don't want to wait that long. So yes, I want the park now or in near future. And for that, if we have to rezone the park space, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, can I go next? Okay, so I'm currently resident of College Park. So I'm here for last two years in College Park. I would like to oppose the rezoning. So here is my two cents. I might be wrong with the, you know, the message, but you know, it's, it's a, I would like to share my concern regarding the safety as a mother. Currently, my kid is not going to school, he's three years old. But as a mother, I would like to, you know, share my concern regarding this. So in case of emergency or like natural calamities like earthquake, the evacuation time is very critical. So with the expected trend of increase in number of students, I'm not sure what could be the evacuation time. Because each and every kid matters, you know, each and every child life matters a lot. So, you know, it's my two cents that like, you know, we should always think about with the safety perspective as well. Thanks. So I would like to, you know, oppose the rezoning. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Can I go next?
Sure.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Sunu here. So I'm a resident of Mountain House from past two years in the College Park. So by the time we have moved, we knew there is no park that is built and it will be built soon. But from past years, because there's no park, I have two kids and both of them, either they at home or they are playing on the road. There is no play area or even a small play area or there is no park. So I would suggest that park area, whatever is there, is built, you know, as soon as possible. So that before the kids, you know, grow and they, before they become big. Because what I, what we heard is it is going to take, if they start now, it's going to take five years. But if this rezoning and all this discussion, so whatever is the decision, I oppose the rezoning, you know, because it is, that's why almost the people we moved to the Mountain House, there's a space, greenery, a lot of greenery. But now it is coming back to what it was earlier, right? There are a lot of too many houses, dense traffic. So I strongly oppose that, but I request that whatever the decision, the park can be built as soon as possible for the College Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go next. My name is Dinesh. And we've been in the College Park area for more than two years. We, we were sold a dream saying that there's going to be a park, South Park, which is going to be one of the largest parks where my kids can actually play. But today, as it stands, is that there are being conditions being put, which is the rezoning of the particular piece of land, which, which I feel that is a kind of a injustice to the people who have actually decided to move to College Park. Part of the reason is because, one, we were told that this is going to be one of the largest parks. Second, is that the justification that is actually being given, saying that we don't have the money to do it. It is kind of not really acceptable in a way because if you look at it, whenever a planning commission sits, they also account for inflation, inflation and the cost of maintenance of this parks. And if it was part of the master plan, then why, how can they really miss the financial aspect of building a park and maintaining it when it was in the plan? So that, that's kind of where I really want to rest this case and say that I oppose the rezoning and they definitely want the full part, which was part of the master plan to be built.
Thank you. And please, let's not be repetitive. We are pushing eight thirty five. Next.
Okay, hey, respect to chair and then thanks for giving it us time. My name is Sudhir Pakala. I was on college as scientist and then I lived in, this is my twenty fourth country. And then I worked in eight countries so far and then have seen the world and then mingle with the various people, religion, you know, all around the world and I lived in Scandinavia as well. So I do recommend and then respect people who have the life of freedom here. And then that's what I be moved from the Bay area to here so that we can, we can bring and nurture our kids with, you know, the more recreation as well as good, good steel district. And the reasoning I'm opposing here, why? Because, you know, the more number of houses actually hampers on our recreation size based on the, compared to the size of the parks and recreations here versus the number of the families and then the houses here. And because, and also it's added into the Alameda County where we have like a huge traffic issues and then threaten and, you know, the crime, whatever it is. And also, it was, it was, it was known before and then it was intimated before in a different way. And then now things are getting concising, you know, reducing the size of the parks and recreation here, even in the school, school parks as well and the school premises as well and the facilities. So that's why I wanted to, because it's, because most of the people during COVID time has been moved here. That's why the prices has gone up and then it says more developers actually have an eye now to reduce the parks and build more houses. And actually, it's a kind of not a good nurturing for the, you know, future for our kids, for the different age groups. So that's why it's not a my voice, it's actually my community nearby neighborhood of more than two hundred people's voice. I'm representing for them as collectively as we are actually opposing the rezoning as well for the sake of future of the Mountain House College Park residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go on next? Yeah.
Yes, proceed.
I'm again the resident of College Park. And I'm not great at the number that has been presented by my fellow residents, but I conquer with them. In conjunction to the numbers, I would like to tell something about my personal family thing. I have two kids, one is going to elementary school in Costa and the other is a two years old, two years old. With all these numbers and with all this misconception around what LUSD has presented versus what we assume. Now, the stress levels has been building on a day-to-day basis, saying, thinking whether my kid, who is the two years old, is going to get into the Costa or not, even though I'm living here from the last one and a half year. If possible, I'm here in order to oppose the decision of rezoning right at this moment. And if there is a chance, if it can happen, if there is a constructive discussion between LUSD and the department who proposed there, saying that there is a normality of a second school versus the concerns that we are raising from the resident standpoint. And if we can discuss one more time on the table and can revisit the decision, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing from no one else, we'll hear from the applicant rebuttal. We, we may have one who wishes to speak in support. Oh, okay. Do you have a number on how many more, please?
Hi.
One second, sir. We have one who wishes to speak in support. I'm not sure about in opposition. Oh, okay, okay.
Hi, can I go next?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ratan. I live in College Park area. So I would like to talk about the site one where like most of my, like, colleagues were not focusing. Let's say one point seven acres, public facility, two houses. So we don't have any public facility as of now in College Park. So the one which is identified, why we need to convert it to the houses, that's one point. And as all of our, like, friends, neighbors commented till now, I would like to say, like, this is, College Park is built like mostly ninety percent medium to low density houses. So there's like, it's more crowded place already and we like taking out the school area and other park area will like, already we moved here two years back and we don't have park for our kids to play and all. So these are basic amenities. Without that, how builders sold the houses, that's another thing. But yeah, I request the jury to please reject this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking for the person online that would like to speak in support of the project.
Hello, hello.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Igor Kysilov. I am College Parker resident. I live here. I have three kids that, by the way, use the same Costa school, what we are discussing. And it's probably the hardest decision for me to say that I am in support for it, but I am in support for it. Because that project will definitely create some problem for College Park. It really, in summary, would be that current special plan talks that there will be about fourteen hundred students generated by College Park while current school, nine and half hundred students. I have done a lot of research. I communicated with our CSD, I communicated with this school district. And per school district response, they have a plans to either expand our existing school and they confirm that they have enough space for it or they can assign people into other schools in the district. I have done a lot of research trying to calculate is the numbers that used to calculate the number of students correct or not correct? I have just done that research now and with current number of homes and current number of students enrolled in district, we have seventy three student, zero point seventy three students per home while the target is zero point six seven six. But part of these homes are actually zoned as medium-high density and they expect to generate less number of students. And if we will recalculate it with amount of that homes, the real number of calculation of generation would be zero point six six or something like that. So it's very, very close or even less than what district is using. And looks like a district will assign, will create a facilities not based only on a necessity of a neighborhood, by, based on a necessity of entire district. So right now, after all the talks and understanding how much school may cost, I have zero belief that we may ever see a second school in the College Park unless some more, some more applications to extend zoning from medium to high density or something like that would be approved in future. So at the same time, the school share a land with a park that we need. The second park, yeah, we are also talking about as though a land that required to be decided before the park could be constructed. We know that a construction costs increasing pretty quickly and amount of money that have been already paid from previous homes, maybe not enough in future for homes, for building a parks in future or we will have parks with those facilities. So I'd really like to make as less delay as possible for creating a park. If I would see any opportunity that a school district would be interested in building second school here, my, I would not support. My uh I would not support that uh that proposal. But right now we have a very, very clear response from school district. They are not interested in that land. They could manage uh college park population with uh within existing schools in a district and within uh college park school itself. It definitely would require a lot of talks with the school district in future how we would. Uh, draw a border lines for a school to solve the problems that people assigned not to their schools and they will break friendship and other things. But it's possible to solve in future on a school district level. At the same time, nothing good.
Sir, you got about twenty seconds. Let's wrap it up, please.
So my uh my ask is to support that proposal, but at the same time add some guarantees for us that. Parts will be developed as we were promised by a developer in as soon as possible way and a year as he.
Okay, thank you, sir. We are out of time. Any other in support online? Okay. Rebuttal from the applicant.
Is this on? Okay, it is on. Steve Pinkerton, General Manager, Mountain House Community Services District. The developers asked me to speak a little bit at the beginning. First of all, apologize that the the school district could not be here. Although I would mention right up front, I monitor the school district meetings and. I think the last time any issues with Costa School came up was when they were celebrating the ribbon cutting. It's been crickets at school district meetings regarding any issues with uh Costa School enrollment. And we as a district spend a lot of time partnering with the school district to make sure there's not going to be uh capacity issues. And I've got a lot of experience in this. My first job forty years ago. Uh, in a Southern California community was to deal with the fact that nine out of their fifteen elementary schools were now half empty because the. You know, as as communities age, you have to figure out reuse for those facilities. And so it's always a big challenge figuring out how many schools do you build? And then how do you manage to maintain those schools once you've got, you know, each neighborhood goes through a population way rise and then that falls over time. When a neighborhood turns over, there's not as many kids in the next generation as there was in the first generation. That's one hundred percent typically the case. And we have another factor, and this relates both to the parks and to the schools, that's the biggest factor that we really haven't talked about real clearly. Everybody talks about the master plan. Uh, when the master plan, which is a real challenge to figure out back in the nineteen nineties, how to finance the community of fifty thousand people. How are you going to build all the infrastructure, all the schools, all the parks, water, sewer, trash? How do you figure all of those things out? And so you have to make certain assumptions upfront and then you have to modify the plan over time. Uh, the biggest change is that since the year two thousand, uh, the inflation rate has gone up about eighty percent. So you're making ten dollars in two thousand, you're making eighteen dollars now. Uh, construction materials have gone up about a hundred and forty percent. So you would think, okay, so construction's gone up a little bit more than inflation. But because of all these uh special lighting that we have to put, you you name it, all the different materials. Uh, park construction and school construction has gone up three hundred percent since two thousand. And it's made the math of trying to build out the master plan a lot more challenging, not to mention the fact that. Uh, maintenance costs, everything up has gone up far more than the cost of inflation. And so as as you're planning schools. As you're planning facilities, you have to be very careful to ensure that you're making the best use of the tax dollar. When the gentleman mentioned the special tax earlier, which is one of the reasons that Mountain House is able to survive. Uh, nobody ever wants us to raise the special tax, but the problem is each year our costs go up. And there's been many years when they didn't raise a special tax. Special tax is only at about seventy percent. Of what it should have been if they'd raised it by the pre-prescribed amount uh each year. But in any case, we have to make sure that we live within our means, whether we're a special district or whether we're a city. And so a couple of years ago, we went and updated the parks master plan to make sure that these parks were right sized to what could be affordable. Uh, within the community and in reality, common within uh other areas. Uh, you know, one of the things that was pointed out last week, if you look at our neighbors in Tracy, they've been talking about an aquatic center and a senior center and all these amazing projects. For about twenty years. And then what they do is they start setting money aside in a rainy day fund. And every time they get money in there and say they're ready to build, the prices have gone up at twice the rate of the money that they're collecting. And now twenty years later, nothing's ever going to be built. And so I feel like in my career, we've had, I've had a pretty good track record of getting things built. It was great seeing the movie theater across the street. You know, if we kept waiting for the perfect time, we never would have got it built. The arena. The all all these different amenities, we only get these built if you 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 drill down and you make sure that you. You figure out how to get these things done and don't just dream about these things, that you implement them. And so in order to get the park built, we had to modify the zoning a little bit. We have sixteen thousand one hundred and five lots allowed in Mountain House. And all these zone changes are consistent with that six hundred one hundred and five lots that looked at the traffic, that looked at the school capacity, the road capacity, everything else. We're just modifying those things to make sure that we can make these parks economically feasible. In fact, the whole reason I think a lot of people are even aware of the park is because we wanted to build the park sooner than had been built in other neighborhoods. The typical requirement in Mountain Houses, a park's built at the point of eighty percent occupancy in a neighborhood. We wanted to have parks start getting built sooner. So we went out, worked with the community and then. That raised all the ire of wait. You're putting more houses in, you know, we want the park, but we don't want the houses. What? You're taking away one of our schools. Uh, you know, just a couple of facts. There's not twenty-three classrooms in the school. There's thirty-two. Uh, they're not all occupied yet because there's only five hundred and six people in the school. Those six hundred number includes pre-K. Not the K through eight right now is five hundred six. The capacity is nine forty-seven. Uh. Four hundred and fifty-nine of the kids come out of the neighborhood at this point in time. Uh, the the other thing you have to remember, because we don't want to overbuild schools. Is that it's traditional in Mountain House that when you first move into a neighborhood, you may or may not get into your neighborhood school, but after a year or two, you typically get in. Uh, to your neighborhood school. You know, everybody talks about how wonderful the school district is. The reason for that is they've been very careful with their resources. A lot of other school districts would have spent eighty million dollars in that school. They built a superior school for sixty million dollars. And work very closely with the district and with the developer to get it built before the neighborhood was completed, to get it built upfront. And so they've got a good plan in place. They've the superintendent has laid out very clearly. That uh there will be the capacity. There's always been the capacity in the district. For example, the four original schools. Have five hundred less students in them now than they did six years ago. This school has about five hundred additional capacity. As this neighborhood grows, they they the developer dedicated two additional acres. So if they do need to put in additional classrooms, they can. If they someday want to get it up to thirteen hundred students, they probably won't. And yet thirteen hundred is a little larger than other schools, but. Right here in this county, there's plenty of three-year schools with thirteen hundred kids. These are nine grades of thirteen hundred kids. These are not huge schools. Most of the schools in the district are eight to nine hundred. This one's going to be nine hundred and fifty. Uh, as the developer said, the when they were worried about development happening, they looked at two smaller schools. But every other school in the district's around eight to nine hundred students. So. Uh, you know, we've tried real hard to get all the facts out. So it's frustrating to hear, continually hearing all these concerns that I think we've addressed and. If if these were the facts that you heard tonight, I would be concerned too. But the districts worked very hard to try to right-size the park, to make it financial, to make it to where we can build, get these parks built right away. But we can't build the neighborhood park until the rezon's done and the land uh is dedicated and we can't build the other park, the South Community Park. Until the rezon's done and we get the funds uh to to build that park. And the school districts made it crystal clear, they've got eight schools now, they've got plenty of classrooms and they've got plenty of classrooms for the future as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so in in July, it it becomes incorporated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what happens then? Who makes the decisions on situations like this?
It would be the city council and the planning commission. I think the reality is it'll take about, we have hundreds of documents. And months of training to do with the city council. You know, we have an experienced board of directors, three or four of which are going to be on city council, but they've never dealt with land use before. And so I think one of the reasons that we'd like to see this happen now is because there there's going to be a learning curve on land use. And it it would take a good amount of time before I think there could be a decision made on this by the city council and the planning commission. And the longer we wait, the more the prices are going to go up to build things. And we may end up like Tracy where we can't get things built. We think it's really critical that these rezones go through at this this point in time. I mean.
Material costs going up isn't a foregone conclusion. Interest rates could lower tells then too. I mean, things couldn't get cheaper to build possibly in that time.
I I haven't seen that happen in the last decade, so.
Well, interest rates can go down, correct, which would make things cheaper, people buy, so.
I I can tell you on, for example, on this subdivision since twenty nineteen, while interest rates were going down, the cost of uh. Just building all the base, you know, backbone infrastructure went from forty-seven to seventy-five million during that time.
And so the reason to not, well, of course, so it comes in front of us. It's our job to handle it.
Correct.
Because there's a timeframe, right? You guys have the right to get something timely done up in front of the commission. And your feeling is that if it this something like this was postponed or put off until there was. The ball in the community's court, the city council and such, that would be too long until they actually get something done.
I think it'd be detrimental to the project. I think it'd be the people in this community, they want a a park. And we want to get that park for them. And I think whether you hear this tonight or you hear it a year from now, it's not going to change the school situation either. As the last speaker said, there's not going to be another school built in this neighborhood, and that's really not a city council decision anyway. That's a Lamersville Unified School District decision.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in.
Yeah, please.
I served for eight years on the Lincoln Unified School Board. Yeah, folks, you're at the wrong meeting. If you've got a concern about schools, you need to take it up with the school district. Our job here has nothing to do with this. The school's going to get built or not. I I really feel your concern, but I can tell you. Uh, when the city has stopped and decided to uh close golf court, the two golf courses. They didn't even consult Lincoln Unified School District about the schools that would need to be made in uh what was. What is still Swenson Golf Course. It was going to cost the district. Fifty million dollars to build an elementary school and over a hundred million dollars to build a high school. And districts have to go out and get the money to build the schools. It's somebody just doesn't hand him a check. You have to pass bonds. And it is, and I I I hear your concern, but it's also someone who's uh still in education. Um, as Mr. Pinkerton said, the numbers are going to go down. Uh, it is cyclical, you know, you got little kids now, but in ten years. They're going to be high school and beyond. And so the numbers are going to go down. And um, I think you need to take your concerns about the school district to the next school board meeting.
I also want to quickly point out that in the conditions uh for each subdivision, they have to get a certificate of compliance from the school district. So if there are enrollment issues two, three, five years from now, when some of the other subdivisions are coming in place. Those developers do have to mitigate that, you know, whether it is with, you know, and pay for the additional classrooms that would be needed. People can't just. Build if the circumstances have changed at that point in town. It's right there in the conditions of each subdivision that they have to get the. The certificate of acceptance from Lamersville.
Okay, any other questions for this gentleman? No?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the applicant?
Just want to make a couple of points. First of all. I heard no um objection to the consistency finding of staff as to the policies and. And documents that basically form this uh specific Plan Three area, College Park. And that the recommendations in the findings are consistent with that. With regards to the school, um, I'm not going to repeat what Mr. Pinkerton said, but. Uh, everyone that spoke here this evening is served, is being served by the Costa Elementary School. Our company advanced fourteen million dollars plus the issuance of bonds um that were incurred against our property. In order to build a school that exists today. So we worked with the C S D, we worked with the school district to bring the school in faster than than what was required. The the other part is um is we are working with this the C S D. And and attempting every possible way to beat the condition of eighty percent build out to have the park completed, the community park. And have it done much quicker. And so we're diligent, working, working with the C S D on that. We are starting the construction of neighborhood, the neighborhood park this year. Um, again, ahead of ahead of schedule. So we're doing our best to 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 get the services in place, but we do need these approvals. And I think. Somebody had mentioned the dedication of the park property. Um, you know, is there is going to be a result of of this approval because that forms the lot that we can describe. That we can dedicate to to the C S D. So by action today, we start moving forward now. With implementation of the community park. So I asked for, again, I asked for. The commission's endorsement of the staff recommendation and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we will move it back to the commission. Sir, did you want to speak? No, uh, not not the time. Thank you. Um, okay, we're going to bring it back to the commission. For discussion. Commissioner Sangha, you're in the community. Anything to say?
Yes, I would like to escape a couple of facts here. Uh, like Mr. Pinkerton had talked about Tracy. Uh, I don't want to throw Tracy under the bus, but I will let you know about this, that. What College Park is getting at such an early stage, it is it is a fact that usually people don't get their schools apart till eighty percent of occupancy. Uh, not that there's been a favor been done, but uh it's it's a good thing on the part of the C S D and the developers to do that. Um, I have been there. I I understand I didn't, I I don't live there in Mountain House and I I don't have no personal. Properties there in Mountain House, uh, but I know people there and I hear things, good and bad. It is a good school district, uh, but there's always, uh, you know, things cannot always be all rosy all the time. You have to give in something to get something. That's what my personal belief is. Uh, I believe that uh. That not only the developer, but the C S D, which is governed by a very brilliant city manager and a good group of uh. Board of directors there. Out of the five, they have four of them are going to become the city consul. Uh, but it will take time. The planning commission, it takes a long time to understand the rules and regulations and there has been a lot of terms and conditions that are in the D A. Uh, that are being followed. Uh, from my perspective, from my experience, yes, you may not get everything hundred percent of what you desire. But what is reasonable and what is legit and what is doable at this given time uh is being done. And talking about L U S D again, their elected body, if people have concern, um, pardon my bluntness here, but. It has to be addressed to those people. We our job here is to talk about land use. Our job here is talking about. How the land use can be determined depending on what's been brought to the table and what's been brought to the table to us. Uh, makes sense to us, at least to me. I cannot talk on other people's behalf. And um, I I did do my study. I kept an open mind till the end of it. I heard each one of these persons who spoke for, only one that spoke for and about thirty plus who spoke against. I respect everybody's time and emotions and at the end of the day, like I said, um. Speaking from my personal experience, being a planning commissioner for over ten years with city of Tracy now on the county, I'm. I am pretty sure I'm that, you know, this is not something that is going to do any harm to anyone. Uh, the school district knows what they're doing and the C S D did take time. This is the old master plan. Some things have to be changed because we did not know COVID. Some things have to be changed because we did not know COVID was going to come and so many people were going to buy home in 2021. But we also know that all the kids are going to grow up. They are not going to stay in elementary school. So that being said, I support this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that, you know, planning can make a really good community, but the people can make it a really great community and I look forward to July where you people all get your say and, and involved and that process sounds like it's going to take a while, but you folks will be able to make a great community just based on your involvement tonight. It's in front of us today to either move forward with this and any other commissioners that would like to speak on this project?
You, you heard me. I definitely, schools have a, are a big part of my life and what I believed in when I served on Lincoln's board. As he said, take, take your issues directly to the school board and the school board members and, and continue to be involved in your children's education. I think it's, I am in support of, of these changes and I just think it was, it's a testament to, to you as new homeowners in a, in a new community to come and speak to us tonight and I appreciate your effort.
And I, I follow Commissioner Sanga's lead. She's the one that lives there out of all of us, I believe. And I think that, like I said, it's, you guys are going to have a wonderful community in the future and for a long time. And with the amount, there's probably 30 city councils, future city council members up here in this room right now. So with that being said, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion?
I would like to say.
Oh, please.
I, I would like to thank you all for coming. I know it takes a lot to come out and to speak your mind. Even if we didn't pass this, there wouldn't be a school. So I feel like this is a good project. It's going to, they'll be able to move forward and get the park going and, and to get things going. And it will take a long time for the new city to, to, to be ready to make good decisions. So I am in favor of the project, but thank you for coming out.
No, it's closed now. It's up to the commission. That's the process. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda item as recommended by the staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Rustaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Milis?
Yes.
Commissioner Mizli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanga?
Yes.
Commissioner Grunske?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to other business.
Would you like a director's report with that? I, I.
I got director's report down the road, but other business, is there any other?
Nope.
Okay, let's go director's report.
I know.
All right, I just want some things to say.
No, no new business. We have two meetings that are coming up. They, I'm pretty loud. I think I can, I think I can speak over it. The two meetings in April are pretty much Mountain House items as well. It's a very similar request to move items forward while it's still under the county's jurisdiction. So those are, that's what, what is coming up. The two updates for the board, yes. Pardon?
It's not a bad, that seemed like a lot of items for, I guess these were all tied together for the most part, but.
Tonight?
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like several of those Mountain House projects were.
It was just four items tonight and this last one was like multiple applications for one. It has to be processed to the other.
Are the other ones, are they going to have that multiple applications?
There are multiple applications, however, there do not appear to be as contentious as tonight.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
No schools?
No.
About parks?
Not that I'm aware of.
Just wanted to make sure.
Not that I'm aware of. So we.
Eat dinner before.
We will be working on some agenda management to determine whether we can combine them into the second meeting in April. We need to speak with our contract planner as well as the applicants. But I understand that Chair Grunske is not available on the fourth. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we will keep you posted on, on what we intend to do. And just two quick updates. We had the big battery storage facility that did get expedited and went to the board like right after this meeting and so that was approved by the board. So that, that was good news. And then the other, we have a, an appeal of the church that you heard about a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago, actually, I should say, that's going to the board on Tuesday. And that was appeal on appeal by the irrigation district. So that concludes my report. I know it's been a long evening unless anyone has any questions for me. Thank you very much.
I think we're good. That's it, folks.